This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and we're calling this regular town council meeting to order. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 12th. At this point, we'll move on to Item 2, Prayer. Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us all here safely. We just ask you for your guidance and your wisdom so we can make the right decisions for what is best for this town. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is Roll Call. All council members are in attendance, so we'll now move on to Item 5A. Adoption of minutes of previous meetings, special town council meeting, February 6, 2024. Can I get a motion to adopt these?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on to Item 5B, which I will entertain a motion to table.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Gambatista. Discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on on the agenda. Next item up is 6A. Presentations, Proclamations, and Declarations. Presentation of Killenly Parks and Recs Department Volunteer of the Year. Ms. Wakefield.
Killenly Parks and Recreation Proclamation honoring our 2023 Volunteer of the Year. Whereas the Killenly Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of our community, the council would like to express our gratitude to your longstanding volunteer efforts which have made KPRD events and programs possible. Jeff Grockie has unselfishly continued to generously share his technical expertise in sound services since receiving his first KPRD Volunteer Award back in 2018. Jeff is the first Volunteer of the Year to be inducted twice since the inception of the Town and Parks and Rec Volunteer of the Year. Over the past six years, Davis Park Summer Concert Series, Killenly Fireworks, Killenly's Wild Night Out, and various other KPRD projects and events totaling well over 450 hours of volunteering, our town is excited to see this year's fireworks and entertainment and the summer concert series which Jeff will be continuing to bring his professionalism and experience. It should also be mentioned that Jeff's dedication to the department also has brought additional volunteers, contributors, and donors. Among those are Winchester Interconnect and John Normington for special lighting services. Whereas special events would not be possible without the tremendous number of volunteers and individuals like Jeff Grockie, Jeff's expertise has tremendous impact on the quality of life and recreational opportunities to our community. Jeff leads with example and passion and is quick to help the recreation department produce a high level of special events and programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly recognizing Jeff Grockie as the recipient of the 2023 Volunteer of the Year Award for the Killenly Parks and Recreation Department, be it further proclaimed that the Town Council urges all citizens to help their community by volunteering their time and knowledge. Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 12th day of March 2024.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Jeff, would you like to say anything? Okay. On behalf...
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Thank you, Council. My name is Anthony Isley. I'm the Assistant Director of Killenly Parks and Recreation. I will not embarrass Jeff too much, I promised them that I wouldn't. But I am... Thank you for being persistent years ago until you got to the right contact. So over the 16 years that I've worked for the department, Jeff has been instrumental in all of the summer concerts since I've been here. The sound services, a tremendous savings to the town so we can put these on. I do have a copy of the upcoming firework show as well as, this hasn't been released yet, our summer concerts for this year. I hope that the council will attend some of those, so I'll leave those up there as well. I also want to really, really quickly thank certain council members here that are too that have been Volunteers of the Year. Ms. Wakefield has helped us with our summer camp program, helping keep costs down for first aid and CPR training. I did some quick math beforehand, over $35,000 in savings since I've been here, just in that alone. I don't even want to go into what sound, equipment, and everything else that you have provided us in savings, but it's the volunteers. Mr. Gambatista, you volunteered in our youth group program. Ms. George, you volunteered in our Celebrate Killenly, so you've really... I love seeing the involvement. Thank you. For anyone that's watching this at home, volunteers are the heart of any town, and I encourage you to get involved in your community more, and we're lucky to have folks like Jeff Grockie on our team.
Thank you. On behalf of the council, I do want to say thank you. Without volunteers, the town wouldn't run the way it does. All volunteers add so much to this community and help make the community as special as it is. Thank you. And now we'll move on to Item 5B. Presentation of Killenly Parks and Recs Department, the Little Theater Volunteer of the Year. Ms. George.
Thank you. Killenly Parks and Recreation, the Little Theater on Broad Street, Proclamation honoring 2023 Volunteer of the Year. Whereas the Killenly Parks and Recreation Department and the Little Theater on Broad Street program are an integral part of our community, the council would like to express our gratitude for your longstanding volunteer efforts which have made KPRD theater events possible. Chris Brandriff is truly a part of the heartbeat of the Little Theater on Broad Street. Chris has dedicated herself to every production in Killenly. Chris makes all the beautiful costumes for the shows. Chris has put in hundreds of hours doing this. She's very creative. All of the cast and crew enjoy their interactions with her. The Little Theater on Broad Street and Killenly Parks and Recreation Department are thrilled to have the opportunity to thank and honor her for her contributions. We could not think of a more deserving recipient of the first award dedicated to the theater program than Chris Brandriff. Whereas theater events would not be possible without the tremendous number of volunteers and individuals like Chris Brandriff, Chris's expertise has a tremendous impact on the participants of all ages who participate in the theater program. Chris leads with example and passion and is quick to help the recreation department produce such a high level of community theater. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly recognizing Chris Brandriff as the recipient of the 2023 Little Theater on Broad Street Volunteer of the Year Award for the Killenly Parks and Recreation Department, be it further proclaimed that the Town Council urges all citizens to help their community by volunteering their time and knowledge. Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 12th day of March 2024.
Bucky Lobush, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. We're really excited. Obviously, this is our first award for theater. We felt that theater alone has many, many volunteers who dedicate time to the program and make it so successful, and we actually felt that Chris honestly would be the first recipient. The amount of time and effort, when I put in, when I wrote that proclamation, it says 100 hours. That's 100-plus per show, and we do five or six shows a year. It's amazing how much time Chris spends, and I just want to give you a quick example. We're doing everybody's favorite Show Wonka coming up, okay? There's 76 cast members that are going to be in costume wardrobe. Chris has probably been working on this. I talked to her today. It's been over three months, and it's not just about going out and looking and finding costumes, but it's, you know, we... There's sewing machines that are in the rooms that she's making costuming, and again, it's not just about the preparations. We're going to be putting on six shows at the Little Theater on Broad Street, and she'll be there every night, making sure that every cast member is set to go with their costumes, making sure that they're getting onstage and offstage, and if they have to change costumes. So it's not just about even the preparation before, it's from beginning all the way to end, and believe it or not, we're doing one show now and getting probably ready for the next show, so it's not only just this. And I will add, even though it's not Killenly, she also does this for the Bradley Playhouse, so I don't know how she does it, but she's an Energizer Bunny, and we are so lucky to have her here, so I really thank you for being part of Killenly's Little Theater on Broad Street. Again, on behalf of the council, I just want to thank you for your dedication and volunteering and all the time you put into this community. It is very much appreciated. Absolutely. Come up to the mic. That way, anyone who's listening online can hear.
Hello, people out there. Even though I'm in theater, I don't do speaking, so... But I just wanted to say that this has been a pleasure of mine for only eight years, and I can't tell you how much the support in Killenly from parents and people like you can provide. It's inspirational, and I think great things are coming to Killenly, so keep up the good work. And these guys are amazing. Holly and Natasha, you can't get two better people in the world to do this job. And then Anthony and Tommy and Bucky and their staff are amazing, so thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
One thing she didn't mention, I'm her husband. I mean, the Amazon cross, it shows up late at night, it goes to one morning.
Moving on on the agenda, next item up is 6C. Presentation of Killenly Conservation Commission 2023 Environmental Award. This 2023 Environmental Award is being presented to the Killenly Community Garden for exceptional dedication to lessening food insecurity in Killenly. Ms. Brownwell.
Hi, I'm Donna Brownwell. I've been on Conservation Commission for over 20 years, and we've been doing this environmental award for at least that long. A couple of quick things just before I pass it along to Jean. We are scheduling some walks coming up and also a bus tour going into the summer. I also have a number of volunteers that are volunteering at Cat Hollow to enhance the gardens and the plantings there. I'm so thrilled about that. Other people are taking charge, yes. Yes, that's a good thing. And this environmental award is going to be presented by Jean Mountford. She's our vice chair. Yeah, vice chair of conservation.
Hi, Jean Mountford. Okay, in selecting our recipients, the Killenly Conservation Commission looks for a person or organization that has in some way impacted our community in a positive way. The Killenly Community Garden fills that criteria. With the dedication of three main volunteers, the community garden provides food security by growing vegetables that are collected and brought to the Friends of Assisi to be dispersed among the patrons. Heather, Carrie, and Linda also attend Killenly community events like the Tomato Festival and Second Saturday to pass out bouquets of flowers that have also been grown at the community garden, for anyone who stops by their tent to learn more about them. With busy lives, the amount of time it takes to prep beds, plant seeds, water and weed, to the collection of the produce is nothing short of incredible. Linda is also involved in the Free Seed Packet Program at the Killenly Library. It is with our great pleasure that the Killenly Conservation Commission awards the Killenly Community Garden with their 2023 Environmental Award.
Get up here, Donna.
Like our previous recipient, I am not very comfortable talking in front of people. So my name is Heather Goodyear, and I am the Chairwoman... This is in a weird space. I'm the Chairwoman of the Killenly Community Garden, and first and foremost, I would like to thank our friends on the Conservation Commission for thinking of us. I am just a small representation of many volunteers and community members who have come together throughout the past 10 years with a shared purpose of creating green space to help alleviate food insecurity in our little corner of the world. 10 years ago, this past winter, Killenly Community Garden was established by dear friends and volunteers, the town, the Northeast District Department of Health, and numerous businesses and organizations. June will mark a decade since our first growing season, when we began to rent out 11 raised beds to community members as well as offering educational opportunities focused on eco-practices and sustainability. In 2020, due to pandemic restrictions on group gatherings and with the encouragement of our then-town liaison Marina Caprero, we received... We removed six of our raised beds and created what is now 11 30-foot rows dedicated solely to harvest produce for the Friends of Assisi and other area food banks. We were also able to install a comprehensive and self-sustaining solar-powered drip irrigation system, and since then, we have consistently harvested hundreds of pounds of produce each season and logged in even more volunteer hours, thanks to partnerships with Project Genesis and the Killenly Agricultural School students. We continue to offer community members the opportunity to rent one of five raised beds. We are able to provide plants and seeds thanks to the generosity of our volunteers and programs like So Write Seeds. We also provide a significant amount of seeds to the Seed Library at the Killenly Public Library, which was founded by our lovely Linda Mathis here. Our mission is to continue to provide space and opportunities to encourage any person to find their green thumb, because we do believe that gardening is for all. So thanks to the support from organizations like the Conservation Commission, we are encouraged to continue our tireless efforts, which help make our community a better place. And with that said, if any of you would like to visit the garden and/or volunteer some of your time in the fresh air, we meet the first Wednesday of every month at 5:00 PM, either in Room 102 here in the Town Hall or on the nice days in the garden. We also have numerous workdays throughout the months of April through November, and no amount of experience is required, and we are happy to have you even if your ability to help and your availability is limited, and thank you once again.
And now we'll move on on the agenda. Next item up is Proclamation Recognizing the Month of March 2024 as Women's History Month. Ms. Murphy.
Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic and heroic contributions towards the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, whereas American women have played a unique role throughout history of our nation by fighting for equality while continuing to be instrumentally critical to their economic and cultural growth, while combating discrimination and still fulfilling social roles in the labor force both inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women have served our country courageously amongst our military branches, obtained higher graduate degrees, become great leaders of companies, and served in our governmental offices, whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Whereas in 1980, President Carter officially declared the week of March 8th to be National Women's History Week due to growing popularity, increased education, and congressional resolutions. In 1987, President Ronald Reagan passed a proclamation that March be recognized as Women's History Month. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Killenly Town Council does hereby recognize the month of March 2024 as Women's History Month, which is a time for expressing gratitude, a time to honor their strengths, defeats, and triumphs, and their passion to stand up for equality. The contributions women have made to our towns, states, and nations are heroic. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 12th day of March 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. We'll now move on on the agenda. We'll now move on on the agenda. Next item up is 6C. Presentation from Robert Birigard on Friends of Learning in Killenly Folk Fund.
Good evening, council members and public. It gives me great pleasure to come before the council this evening to talk about the history of the Friends of Learning in Killenly, the Folk Fund. It's a great year for the Folk Fund project. We're celebrating our 25th anniversary of grant giving to the Killenly youth and students in the Killenly High, all the Killenly school systems, the five schools. Just want to talk a little bit about the history of the Folk Fund and some interworkings of it, so that the council has a full understanding of what took place to create this legacy and this beautiful endowment that will be providing grants to Killenly children in perpetuity. First of all, the Folk Fund, Friends of Learning in Killenly, was established by my classmates, graduates of the Killenly High School of Class of 1966, as an educational fund. And the interworkings of the fund was always to promote the love of learning for Killenly students within the school system, and we're doing that by providing mini-grants to school teachers that apply online to innovative projects and initiatives to educate our children within the Killenly school systems. And a little bit more history, the inception of this particular Folk Fund. Of course, you guys know, general public knows, that if you're having an endowment fund, there's a lot of work that goes in with it. Well, there's a lot of work to start an endowment fund, and my presentation tonight is going to talk about the Chairwoman of the Friends of Learning in Killenly Folk Fund. Her name is Janice Sahola Sitaway, also a graduate of the Class of 1966. She also has a PhD in education, and she's a retired college professor, now living in Ottawa, Canada with her husband Len. To start this fund, Janice was actually a visionary, and we're all recipients of her vision. She met with some Boston bankers. Back in 1998, there were no community foundations that existed anywhere in Wyndham County or anywhere in the area that would accept the obligation to be an endowment for an educational fund as small as we were when we started. So she was lucky enough to get a good steering group from Boston. Through her hard work, they connected her with the Greater Wistia Community Foundation, which is one of the largest community foundations in New England now. They had grants last year of eight and a half million dollars. You can look up their impeccable record on the internet anytime you want, and you can also Google Friends of Learning in Killenly Folk, and you can get into the database and learn all about Folk and what we've done for the past 25 years. Like I said, I wanted you to understand some of the inner workings of the Folk Fund and what takes place. The eligibility process, you have to be an educator working in the Killenly Public Schools. The grant sizes start at $400 and go up to $800 for collaboration projects. No limit on the number of applications an individual educator or a school can submit. Educators need to receive approval from their administrators or their principals prior to the application being processed. Funds must be spent by the end of the next school year. They have 18 months to process all the material and make their expenditures, or the money gets returned back to the financial department and eventually goes back to Greater Wistia Community Foundation. The fund is not able to support grants to individual scholarship funds or capital expenses. With that being said, I can't talk enough about what it takes to properly manage a fund like this. First of all, you have to have a lot of dialogue, and you have to have a lot of communication. And to promote the Folk Fund as an endowment, you need continued support, you need contributions, and you need a good group of eyes to watch the whole process take place year after year, and no one has done that more completely than Janice Sahola Sitaway. I'm sure that you probably all have received these in your packets. Year after year, you get a specially addressed greeting card inviting you to the Folk Functions and talking about the grant process and so on and so forth. That tapestry that you see on the front was produced by one of my classmates' wives called the Seminole Sass. Janice thought that this quilt was a lot like Folk. It got meshed together by a lot of big donors, small donors, a lot of input by different people to form the Folk Endowment Fund and create a legacy that will continue in perpetuity. So that's just a little history about that. And by the way, all these cards, over the last 25 years, Janice has printed them, paid for them, and sent them. She also produces a little up-to-date brochure every year, kind of like a handout that gives you some history and what happened with the grants, little pictures of all the kids that, you know, were enjoying some of the grant and foundation money that the educators applied for. Again, that takes a lot of time. She reaches out to the individual teachers that found, applied for the grants and received the funding, and then she gets the photographs, and she makes up these little brochures, and she does all that on her own, and she pays for all the printing. We had a '23 financial report come in this year, and I'm pretty proud to say that our classmates donated an additional $7,500 to the Folk Fund this year. Just some of them come in, you know, a thousand at a time. We had a donor a couple of years ago that donated $5,000 anonymously. The fund keeps growing. We've given $85,000 in grants so far since the inception of the fund, and we still have a balance of $203,000. And what's unique about that balance is it's doubling every five years, and I predict within 10 years, this fund will be worth a million dollars. I know in the school budget process, $85,000 is not a lot of money, but the projects that the Folk Dollars fund are projects that the children would never get to do because the money isn't available for these types of events, so it's rewarding to be part of it. In addition, I think I gave everyone on the council a packet and showing 200 projects, over 100 schoolteachers. A lot of schoolteachers apply for the grants every year, like Dr. Paul... She reaches out to the individual teachers that found, applied for the grants and received the funding, and then she gets the photographs, and she makes up these little brochures. And she does all that on her own, and she pays for all the printing. We had a 23 financial report come in this year, and I'm pretty proud to say that our classmates donated an additional $7,500 to the Folk Fund this year. Just some of them come in, you know, thousand at a time. We had a donor a couple of years ago that donated $5,000 anonymously. The fund keeps growing. We've given $85,000 in grants so far since the inception of the fund, and we still have a balance of $203,000. And what's unique about that balance is it's doubling every five years, and I predict within 10 years, this fund will be worth a million dollars. I know in the school budget process, $85,000 is not a lot of money, but the projects that the Folk Dollars fund are projects that the children would never get to do because the money isn't available for these types of events. So it's rewarding to be part of it. In addition, I think I gave everyone on the council a packet and showing 200 projects, over 100 schoolteachers. A lot of schoolteachers apply for the grants every year, like Dr. Poe and Jim Hudson. These guys, you know, they rely on the Folk Fund to support some of their innovative projects that we fund annually. But we funded 13 projects this year, around $7,500. And like I say, anyone who has a child in the Killingley school system, K through 12, they've probably been affected by one of these grants because there's 200 projects here. In addition to that, this is the 23rd edition of Folk Tales. Now, I know that all the schoolteachers get them, the Board of Ed gets them, the council gets them. Everyone that's donated to the Folk Fund over the past 25 years gets one of these. Inside, you'll see a lot of pictorial illustrations of a lot of different events that the kids had fun and enjoyed. And the thing about this particular newspaper, Janice is also the editor of this fine newspaper. One thing about dialogue and communication and inspiring people to be part of an organization or an endowment fund like this, Janice has done a tremendous job. She even writes articles in a Villager newspaper after every grant season is over. What happened in 2020 was something that I wanted to mention. The Class of 1969, President Ted Havelies, sent a communication to Janice, and they got in a conversation. And they had some money in their treasury that were coming into a class reunion period, and he was thinking about, hey, our class could probably do something to show our support for Killingley, our school. You know, instead of having a big class reunion party in an open bar, he convinced his classmates to make a donation to the Folk Fund. So now the Class of 1969 has joined Folk, and they have a named grant within the Folk Fund. And what's really great about it is Janice inspired this to happen through her hard work and communication. They raised $30,000. Pretty big chunk of money. And because of the dialogue and communication, we have other classes that are now coming forward and wanting to join the Folk Fund. And you can have a named grant for your class. It only takes $10,000. Of course, if you have more, you can give more grants every year. But if you can raise $10,000 from your class and classmates, which really shouldn't be that hard to do, you can become a part of Folk and give back to the community and give back to the children of the future of Killingley. In addition to the other items that I spoke about, Janice also sends out an invitation to every new school teacher that comes into the town of Killingley. And if you know anything about the turnover in the town of Killingley, there's been 35, 50, and above every year, we're losing teachers, you know, especially since the pandemic, retirements, and, you know, job security, and there's a whole host of reasons. But it's quite an undertaking to keep track of them all. It's even an undertaking to keep track of superintendents of school. But anyway, Janice does all that, and she reaches out to them. We get all that information, and she sends a letter to every single one of the teachers. So what I want to do tonight is I want to nominate Janice as a community champion. And based on the body of work that I just talked about, it should be pretty obvious that she meets the definition. And I looked long and hard to find the definition that would actually speak to what she's accomplished and done, and I'd just like to read it as my last statement. What is a community champion? A community champion is anyone, a public official, a community leader, a concerned citizen, a health or human service worker, a volunteer, who works hard and well to start and or support an initiative or an intervention, to bring a program or idea to reality, or to otherwise improve the quality of life of a particular group or of the community as a whole. And Janice has done that for 25 years. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from council members? Comments?
No.
Thank you. We'll now move on in the agenda. Item seven is unfinished business for town meeting action, and we haven't done this evening. So we'll move on to item eight, which is citizens' statements and petitions. Ms. Clori, do we have anything submitted?
We did not receive any submitted electronically or in writing.
Thank you. If anyone would like to make public comment, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item nine, council and staff comments. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item up is item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. 10A, Rebecca Gadboyes is seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission. She'd be reappointed as a regular member. Her term would run from April 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2029. Ms. Gadboyes attended six out of eight meetings in 2023 and attended all meetings in 2022. The Historic District Commission currently has one alternate member of vacancy. Can I get a motion to reappoint Ms. Gadboyes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion, comments?
She said that even though it's a small commission, she's happy to volunteer for the town and would, if it was allowed to be on with them a commission, she would. But she's happy to be on that commission, even though the work is hard for them because of all of the regulations of the state, but they get it done.
Thank you.
It's also very nice in the last few years to see that this commission really grows some roots and to grow. And we live in a historic town, and it's nice for people that have those properties that have kind of unified and are putting us, you know, that's part of who Killingley is, so this is a good group.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on. Next item on the agenda is item 10B. Holly Blade is seeking reappointment as an alternate member of the Board of Rec. Her term would run from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2026. Ms. Blade attended two out of three meetings in 2023 and attended all meetings in 2022, and the Board of Rec currently has no vacancies. I will entertain a motion to reappoint Ms. Blade.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Cottula. Discussion, comments?
I mean, it's obvious Holly's done a lot. The Little Theater is really another one of the little gems that we have in this town, so I know it takes a lot of work in the Board of Rec. It's kind of like conservation. If you like to do a lot, you like to be busy, it's a good commission to sit on, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 10C. Lori Zornato is interested in reappointment as an alternate member of the Board of Rescue Association. Her term would run from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2026. Ms. Zornato attended two out of three meetings in 2023 and attended four out of five meetings in 2022, and again, the Board of Rec currently has no vacancies. I will entertain a motion to reappoint Ms. Zornato.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Randalsky, seconded by Mr. Gambitista. Comments?
When Lori came on, she hadn't been on a Board of Commission, and she just brings a lot of good questions and good thoughts and, you know, different ways of looking at things that just have helped the Rec Commission move into continuing on and meeting everybody's needs in town, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 11A, Board of Education Liaison, which we do not have this evening. So we'll move on to 11B, Borough Council Liaison. I do not see him either, so we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is-
I have a question on that. So we don't have any Board of Education budget in yet, do we?
No, the Board of Education, no. We don't have the, they didn't transmit to us their-
We used to get a monthly.
Correct. Their business manager has been out, so I'm not sure if they're delayed with regards to that. But usually, they submit it to us after their Board of Ed receives it, so you may get to next month.
Didn't they just hire her an assistant like a while ago?
Yes, she does have an assistant, but again, she's been out, so I know that they're still trying to juggle.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item 12A, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. I will entertain a motion to accept the summary report on general fund appropriations for town government.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mr. Randalsky, seconded by Mr. Cottula. Discussion, comments?
Is this how monthly we're doing now?
Yes.
So I only had one question, Mary. That was on, of course, I can't find it now, but the police station is only at 8%. Are we just not doing anything on that yet?
The public, the administrative building for our law enforcement, we're still finalizing that construction project, so they haven't moved into it yet. That budget is only for the operate, you know, for the full operation of it. So it's had very minimal operations at this point in time. I expect that they will be, we will be complete with that renovation project before July 1 and have them moving in for July 1.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And item 12B, as it was mentioned, we did not receive the system object budget for the Board of Education. So we'll move on to item 13A, Correspondence Communications Reports, the Town Manager Report. Ms. Clori, if you could go over this, please.
Sure. So the first part of it is the legislative, is a bit of a legislative update. I did submit testimony on two proposed bills. One was House Bill 5212 with regards to concerning education funding in the general, in the governor's budget. There was a shift in ECS cost funding to early childhood education. It did result in a decrease for many municipalities in the ECS funding, not for Killingley, though. But I took that as an opportunity to also highlight to our legislators the fact that Alliance District has been frozen at 2012 funding, at 2012 funding levels. So for the last 12 years, we've not received any increase or any acknowledgement of the cost, you know, just the inflationary costs that have been borne solely by the towns. And reiterate that, you know, in 2012, we were getting 42% of our, of our, of our educational budget was covered by ECS funding, and now that's down to 32%. So it's a 10% lost in overall funding, you know, overall. So I took that as an opportunity to just, again, try and highlight that to our legislators. Secondly, SB 334 was a, so this is a Senate bill, and this is really a carbon copy of a Senate bill that was proposed last year as well for requiring pensions for police officers and firefighters employed by municipalities. The Act actually requires municipalities to join either the Connecticut Municipal Employment Retirement System, SEEMERS. This is a defined benefit plan, and that system is fraught with challenges. Every municipality that I know of that is in it would love to get out of it. They have no control over the funding ratios of it. They have no control over the tiers. They have no control over the investments in that fund. And so it has categorically caused substantial underfunding and huge liabilities to those municipalities and substantial increased costs on an annual basis in order to meet those pension obligations. The other alternative is it has to be in a fund that is similar. Again, in order for it to be similar or superior means that you're also meeting those same unsustainable tiers. So again, I submitted a testimony on this one, just like I submitted last year, highlighting that pension, any fringe benefit should be the local choice. It should be the local municipality determining what is sustainable for their community and for their employees. This is being approached from a retention standpoint, but I don't believe that it is just, you know, police officers are, we're not facing retention issues just solely based on quality of pension. Many police unions and police departments have moved to defined contribution plans, much like Killingley offers our own law enforcement, is defined contribution plans, but, which is a sustainable and affordable pension program that the town participates in. But really, what we're seeing categorically across the state is the impacts of the Police Accountability Bill and the, you know, the eking into qualified immunity and, you know, kind of the discouraging impacts of that throughout our law enforcement. So we've seen a lot of people that have, you know, hit retirement and just decided to retire and move completely out of law enforcement where they might otherwise have chosen to maintain a law enforcement position elsewhere. So, you know, that's the, but that's generally the gist of 334. There's additionally, I did outline with you, I did attend a virtual meeting with, with a number of other municipal leaders, as well as Cost and CCM, with regards to an engineering association. This is really a national association that is working with the Connecticut Association to try and introduce legislation that would change the procurement process for professional services throughout the state for any procurement that is involving state grant funds. And it eliminates, what they're essentially doing is they're, they're looking for the procurement process to be what they call qualification-based, qualification-based selection. But in that process, during the initial round of RFP submittals, no price is given. No cost factors are included in that. And you have to pick your professional service or your professional vendor based solely on qualifications, and then you go into negotiating price. Again, all of the municipal leaders on that call were very strong in opposition to this because while price cannot be your solely, sole dictating force when it comes to selecting your, your professional services, it should be a component. Qualifications, yes, are highly important. Killingley has always structured RFPs for that with qualifications and price being a factor in determining who is selected. So they did indicate that they didn't believe that they were going to be pushing forward legislation this current year, but again, this is about getting in front of upcoming legislation. They expect next legislative cycle to put proposals before legislators to see if they can get something passed that would essentially bypass our existing charters and ordinances around procurement for professional services. So hopefully, we can have good conversations with our legislators around the importance of really reflecting in receiving those prices during the bid process to really be able to understand what the market price is for a service, because that's really why you receive your RFP. You stack them up with the qualifications, but it really has them, you know, fine-tune their pencils on price because they know that they're going to be stacked up to everybody else. They really want to bypass that process, and it really puts the municipalities in a very negative space for negotiation because we don't have basis to be able to understand what the market is driving at that given time for that specific project. So we are trying to, you know, stay in those early conversations to try and hopefully push that back. NDDH, we did communicate, I did communicate the rescission of that withdrawal from, to the board. They are in the process of proceeding with that contract with NDD, with the State Department of Health for the assistance in onboarding a new director- for the assistance in onboarding a new director. They are going to be getting an interim acting director from the, um, State Department of Health while they, um, uh, look to seek that new director. Um, they have asked me to participate on their selection panel for the new director, so I will be, uh, participating in that selection process over the next, uh, few weeks to months. Solid Waste Fund, uh, Michelle, you had asked for all those numbers that we rattled off at the last meeting, and I apologize for having rattled them off, but here's an outline of those, and I did also incorporate, um, the actual, um, a copy of the proposed budget that you will see in your budget book for the Solid Waste, um, Solid Waste Fund, and that budget is based on these increases. So, um, that's essentially what we're looking at doing, and it does, these increases do result in that reduction of that general fund subsidy. Um, and that's something that the, that I know the council, but also the Sub, Solid Waste Subcommittee was really, um, focused on trying to be able to provide some relief on that. Um, Cat Hollow, um, we did meet town staff, we met with several of the master gardeners and Donna to, um, discuss their vision on improvements for Cat Hollow. Um, it was a really great conversation. There was some, um, discussion about, uh, what, you know, what do we have for ongoing maintenance? Um, what do we do for current, the evaluation of dead or dangerous trees, vegetation overgrowth, trash removal, those types of things. Um, the group is going to be working with town staff on clearing certain areas around the walking way. They want to be able to put in, um, plant, uh, flowering perennials and native shrubs, um, promoting pollinator species throughout that area. Um, they are also going to be looking to do, um, species tags on, uh, a lot of the plants to be able to provide some additional education through that section, through that area, and even just education of the general, of the mill and, and that area, um, throughout the, throughout the walk area. So, um, it's the beginning part of a, of a, of a planning process. They really want to take it in phases, which is, I think, a great approach. Um, so, uh, that was a really good experience. Um, so thank you, Ed, for saying that, um, we wanted to plant flowers in, uh, Cat Hollow, because that's the result of there, so, you know, uh, we, we definitely have a good working partnership there. Um, just an update on Chase Reservoir Forest Management, you know, that's something that we've been highlighting and trying to be able to determine how we move forward with that property. So we have engaged with USDA, the Natural Resource Conservation Services Division. We have a forester from that division that is assisting the town in evaluating that property, also working to make connections, um, with Connecticut Deep in looking at possible funding opportunities and developing that forest management plan, and also implementing those plans. That's likely going to be an expensive endeavor when we get into that property and implementation. So, um, we are, um, reaching out, we're trying to schedule a meeting with Deep and this forester in order to be able to really talk through it. That forester has walked the property at this point in time, so they have become familiar with a lot of the challenges that we're facing on that property. Um, and so again, that's our, been our focus property on trying to get that forest management, but they also know that we want to continue with our other properties as well. So a good relationship that we're developing there, and hopefully we'll be able to start moving forward on that. And then I gave you a list of the, uh, various weekly meetings or monthly meetings that I've attended.
Thank you very much. Um, questions, comments, Mr. Randalsky?
Um, with the Department of Health Department, um, so are they going to increase their rates? I mean, we don't have a director, um, looking at that. They weren't doing inspections. What do we, I mean, we're in interim again, we're rescinding our thing, we're trying to give them some leeway.
Yeah, so they, they did propose, um, they did submit the letter, the notification letter out to all the municipalities, um, with our budgetary process, that did indicate that they were looking at a, I think, an 80 cent increase in rate, in their rate, per capita rate, which I think is, you know, it was very well articulated. I believe I shared that with the council at a previous meeting. And attached with it this time around, instead of just a letter, we did receive an entire budgetary package. So, all of their expenditures with details as to what the increases and what the pressures were on those. So I think they've been trying to be very transparent with the municipalities. Um, it was pretty clear in the packages that they did send where the pressures were around, um, what that, what was driving that 80 cents. Um, you'll have that again in your budget package when you start reviewing your budget, um, on that. I will say that I think the, you know, the staff there, you know, it's very challenging to work through an environment that is in a lot of turmoil and upheaval, especially when you have your head, you know, executive position, your leadership position that is in flux. Um, I think the staff is doing a great job, they're still, they're, you know, boots on the ground and they're running still, trying to get as much work as they can get done, um, done. So, you know, they, they haven't laxed back at all, if anything. I think they've tried to pick up the pace even hard, even harder on trying to be able to meet subsurface. Um, that's been a high priority, because they recognize, um, that that is, um, construction-related, um, and any delay in that can result in significant increases in cost to the individual constructing, whether it's, you know, with homes and stuff like that. They want to be very cognizant of that. Um, and then food inspections, they've got another staff member that I think he, if he isn't already fully certified and ready to roll, he's just about there. So they've continued to make that investment in the, um, uh, staff as far as making sure that they can get those certifications, and the state's been working with them on that. So, again, this doesn't change overnight, right? They don't go to, you know, um, 100% overnight, but there are clear indicators that they are, you know, making strides in that improvement. It's going to take time, um, we have to, you know, see about keeping that investment in there for them to be able to make that change, but I think that the, the staff is working very hard and they're doing a good job.
Are we meeting the state statute requirements for timeframes? I mean, we, we went back on inspections and whatnot, but I, I, someone was talking to me about the state statute, they were supposed to give me something in that regard, and I never saw that, but I don't know, but it's a weird, violation of timeframes. Where does that-
I believe that they are meeting timelines at this point in time, but I will double check with them and find that out, so I will make sure.
Somebody had, and they wanted to, you know, they were looking up the specific documentation.
And if anybody has a concern around that, please feel free to reach out to me. Um, help, you know, if, if they need help in liaisoning around that, um, reach out to my office. I will definitely reach out to the Department of Health to see, you know, if there's anything that, um, needs to be adjusted, or what the concern is, or what, you know, what, where, where there might be barriers, um, we're definitely willing to help in that way as well.
In a lot of cases, individuals, entities do not want their name mentioned, so some of these outsiders looking into this, but you talk to the restaurant people, you talk to the septic people, don't you say my name for-
Yeah.
So it's a tough-
So, I really think that the-
I'm not there, and it's hard for me to articulate what I should be asking, because they do not want their names mentioned, so it's a tough spot to be in.
I will say that I think the staff, um, are working very diligently to address all of the applications that they have in a timely manner. They're very cognizant around that, you know, are, um, the towns collectively, the municipal leaders collectively, their concerns were around the direction, um, and the barricades that were presented by executive leadership. Um, the board clearly took steps around that. Um, and so, you know, they are going through a time span right now of, um, a fluctuation. Um, they are still, don't have on boarded a new director. They do have an acting director that is going to flip to another acting director when they get the one for the state depart, from the State Department. But again, um, you know, that can happen during those interim phases. Um, I think that it's a very competent staff that's there, that is working really hard, um, and, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna try and remedy as much as they can.
But I think the letter that we sent out that we were going to take ourselves out of the district in the other towns, that hadn't been done, we wouldn't be, we'd be in dire straits. So, uh, we took that right step, and now rescinding that, we're giving them some time, but if we didn't do that part, we would be in dire straits now, thank you. Oh, on the, on the, um, Cat Hollow, are we going to need more funding? Like, we have a lot of volunteers that are going to be doing the-
Yeah.
Whatever, how do we, is that-
We're going to walk through that as to what that looks like, the group that we met with. They were going to try and start, you know, they were going to be meeting with the Highway Department to really start talking about areas in which they wanted to pull back some of the vegetation, and then they were going to start pricing out costs for, um, uh, new vegetation by scaling it into smaller components, um, we were going to talk through. They were looking at some potential grant opportunities. Uh, Lowe's does do some investments in, you know, small grants, so that, it might be a potential opportunity. But they were looking at some small grant opportunities that we might be able to fund that with, and then we would look to see if there's something from a municipal ask.
Well, like, right now, we're, we're in the budget developing process, so I, I'm just looking at, do we, I don't know, from your standpoint, are you going to add something there, or, or we'll see that when you present the budget?
You'll see it when I present, I haven't finalized everything at this moment, so I don't have-
And on the, on the Chase Reservoir, now, we have to, I guess from dealing with the Conservation Commission and whatnot, even if we have an overseer or the, um, uh, the forester and whatnot, but before anything is done, because we have an over, I can't think of what, remember what the terminology is, but we have another-
Yes, there's another entity.
Another group that oversees that, so they have to be on board with all this process also.
We have to give them notification, because we do have the right to manage and maintain the property. So we will have to give them notification, we'll bring them on board early on in that process, so that way they're, you know, well aware, they have the opportunity to express any concerns. Um, but really, you know, we're really talking about a lot of, uh, dead and dangerous trees.
Yes, that's true.
Um, and, you know, as a, as a land trust, um, they're, they want to see the health and well-being of the land as well, too. So, um, it's not like we're looking to clear space for some sort of, you know, construction or building or anything like that, this is just literally trying to deal with a heavy amount of diseased trees. So we will bring them on board very early in that process, so we can, you know, make sure that they're well aware. But because it is maintenance, um, we would be able to just give them notification.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to let you know, Ed, um, in, because I was with NDDH for like 10 years. There was a time where their numbers were as low as they are at present, and they devised a plan, and most of the people that were there at the time are still there, and I think with the, with the good leadership, um, I, I, they brought themselves, they were up to almost 100% in a very short period of time. So they're, they're very focused, they're very dedicated to their, you know, they live here. They're part, they're part, they're part of this community, and they, they want safe eating establishments and houses to have good septics, and, and so they're just as committed as, as many of the other people in the area. So, um, I, I think with the good leadership in place that, that they're working towards, I think in a very short period of time, you'll see everything's right back up where it should be.
I wanted to add to, if that's okay. Um, through sitting on the Finance Committee, Committee, and seeing the work they've done in the past two months, and how they, they've really thrown themselves into it. Um, the last report, and I can send all you guys the numbers, that all of the inspections have increased under the interim. Um, Uncus Health is covering for them right now, and he laid out all the numbers they've done recently, and they're much higher than they were. So they, they are putting in the work, they have, they're heading into a better leadership situation, and they're all dedicated. And as I've stated before, a lot of the problems, I mean, they're, they're, I think probably, I'd say 90% of their employees are in some sort of training or to increase their certifications, and one of the worst holdups is the state of Connecticut not offering the actual classes except once or twice a year, and these people are ready to go. They get all their training done, but then they can't go for the testing. So that's something we need to work with our legislators on, too.
That's what I was going to say, we have to-
They're doing fantastic, from what we, yeah, what we demanded, what we demanded, all the towns, I mean, they have stepped up to the plate. They've done a really good job, and as far as the 80 cent increase, the work product detail they offered this year, and how they've broken down every line item, and they've worked really hard to balance permit fees and per capita, they're, they're doing a really good job. I expect a lot of improvements over the next year.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Murphy?
I just had a question, do we know where the other towns stand with the rescinding?
All of them were required to rescind their withdrawals in order for the state to provide assistance, so all five towns were required, and so we were the last one to finally do the rescission only because of timing and meeting, just to be clear. So all of them had previously, um, rescinded their withdrawal.
And I did question the state representative why that was, and kind of held her fee to, to the fire, and it's because they're actually providing the employee, and they're picking up all the costs, except for fuel when the person is down here, depending, um, if they're using their, if they have to use their own vehicle to go out and do anything for inspection-wise, then NDDH pays for it. Otherwise, as far as we see in the contract so far, the state is picking up the tab on that employee. So that's a substantial savings over, you know, how long they're going to be here.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is 13B. Communication from Board of Ed, uh, Ms. Cloria, could you go over this?
Sure, so this was just a communication from the Board of Education regarding, uh, two expenditures that they've approved from their non-lapsing account. So as, uh, required under the non-lapsing account legislation, when the Board of Education expends funds, they just have to provide notification to the town council that they have authorized the expenditure of those funds. So, um, that's just communicating that, uh, approval.
Thank you. Um, I do have one question on that, I don't know if you know the answers to this or not. Um, I had someone question me about the $109,000 for bathroom doors. Um, did, do you know if that went out for bid?
I honestly don't know what their procurement process was for that, we'd, I'd have to ask the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know that they've actually purchased this, this is them giving authority to go out and buy it, so they may not even have purchased them at, at this moment. This is the authorization for funding.
Okay.
So I, I can ask them that question, though, but I want to just clarify, this is just the authorization of funding.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they have, I kind of remember that, but I will ask for sure, because it was like one of her priorities in the capital plan, and that's all it was at that point.
Yeah, looking at it, seeing that they got an exact number figure all the way down to 50 cents.
Yeah, that is weird, yeah.
Um, I, I would think they had to get that number from somewhere.
I'll ask for you, Jason, tomorrow.
All right, uh, moving on in the agenda, next item up is 14, Unfinished Business for Town Council Action, and we have none, so we'll now move on to item 15A, Consideration and Action on the Resolution, authorizing the Town Manager to execute a one-year extension of a temporary land access agreement between the town of Killenly and Richard Fedor for the use of land at 187 Pratt Road. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
A motion has been made by Mr. Randalsky, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Uh, Ms. Cloria, could you go over this, please?
Sure, back in, um, 20, February 2021, the town council approved a temporary access agreement. It was a three-year agreement, uh, Mr. Fedor has been working with USDA, Natural Resource Conservation Service, um, in executing forest management plan, um, and Connecticut Deep. Um, he had, again, this is property that's right adjacent really to Chase Reservoir. Um, a lot of, um, timber that's been dead, that's, uh, standing dead wood at this point in time. He intended to have the project complete by this point in time, but last year, with all of the rain that we had, it was very difficult to get any, uh, heavy equipment in there, so he's asking for a one-year extension. Uh, the current agreement expires at the end of this month, March 31st. So this would just provide a one-year extension. Again, it's currently an access road that is already established in there that they, in, on the town's property that he is utilizing, so there's no additional disturbance on that, um, and this just grants him that additional time to complete that project.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Randalsky, I don't know if you voted on that one or not. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, we'll move on in the agenda. Uh, next item up is Council Member Reports and Comments. Um, Ms. Barclay, would you like to start?
Um, my meetings are next week.
Thank you, Ms. George.
I have Ag tomorrow night.
Thank you, Ms. Wakefield.
I have, I have rec in another week and a half, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kattula.
Uh, the Permanent Building Committee had another walkthrough, uh, last week on Wednesday, I believe, that's, and, uh, an update on the project that's still on budget and on time, it's still moving along. It's, uh, some great improvements over there, uh, doesn't even look like the same building, very nice.
The temporary heat issue, that's all?
I haven't heard any more problems with it, I believe it's been- I haven't heard any more problems with it, I believe it's been resolved.
All right, it's good to hear.
They're even talking possibly doing roofing if the weather continues to hold, so.
Some sections are ahead of schedule because the weather's been favorable to them, and some, there's a lot of different construction things going on at the same time, and there are people working, a lot of people in the same area, but it's, it's coming along. And I forget when they said they were going to tear down that second, when they do the swing in April, swing to the next phase, that soon after that, they're going to start the demo on that last portable.
We're looking at doing it, I think they're looking at doing it during spring break, the week of April break. They're looking at demolishing that portable unit.
It's good to hear. Ms. Murphy.
I went to WPCA, they didn't have any violations. They talked about Maple Street, two lines getting blocked, were blocked, and they jetted them. The HVAC project on the roof is almost done, the roof is in, the duct work is done, they're still having some sensor issues that need to be fixed. North River to Maple Street lining project, they voted that in for Green Mountain to do it at $138,000. They talked about Phase Two of the INI study, but after a lot of discussion, the board members decided they wanted to, the, the bid came in with Wright Pierce at $284,000, and the board decided they wanted to see what had really happened and been completed in Phase One first, before they went forward. They did, are replacing an Alexander Lake grinder pump, I guess, many of those hookups have grinder pumps, I didn't realize that, not all of them, but many, and the price has gone up from 2,500 to 3,500 each pump. So they're looking at that. The big thing that happened with them was they went back and forth and ran the budget in several different ways with, with their increases to see how they could cover the budget, and they come in, they all agreed at 10%. So it's going to be a 10% across the board, industry and resident, increase to the sewer, sewer people. The other thing I went to, I went to several Board of Education meetings. There was a lot of talk about lawyers and the 10-4B complaint. A lot of it happened in executive session. I think the end result is that we're getting new lawyers for that. It's kind of complex to me exactly what's happening, but I think Shipman and Goodman is going to do, try to settle, and if we don't settle, then a different lawyer is picking it up. But it's, it's quite confusing, honestly. So there was a lot of talk about that, but the big thing for us would be the budget. They talked about the budget, and Mrs. Nash seems to be, Dr. Nash seems to be trying very hard to cut. She sent all of her principals back and said, "Cut 15%," and, and if you really can, and they did, they came back with 15% cut. So it's coming in, preliminary budget came in for that meeting at $49 million, 137,943, 4.98%. And then after she sent it back for 15% cut from everybody, they cut .93% off, and she presented 4.05% increase at $48 million, 699,886. And then, I'm just trying to see if I'm missing anything here. You know, I have a list, if anybody wanted to see it. They came forward with the package plans, and that kind of brought it back up, yeah, the decision packets, brought it back up 86%. So everything they cut, if they go with the decision packages, they're kind of bringing it back up to that, I think it's a little, it would be like 4.8 something instead of the 4.98, but here it is, 4.83% if they went with all the decision packages. So almost 5%. But they still have a lot of deliberating to do, and they're going to be talking about those packages, and this, I know, looking, peeking at the agenda for tomorrow, she's presenting like six different options, and they're not all at this. There's, there's definitely some less than that, so they're trying.
Thank you. Mr. Wayhead.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Gambitista.
I have, I have some Board Act.
Okay. Board Act. Thank you. Mr. Grandowski.
I didn't have a conserva, well, conservation was the same meeting we had, our special town council meeting. But I'd like to thank Bob Borigad for coming out here and presenting the, what the folks, the folk people have done over the last few years. I mean, that's a tremendous asset to help out the schools. We look at it, say, is it, it's not big, big money, but it helps all these small individual projects. And without that, some of these would not happen, it's helping people out. And then we're talking about, here we are with the budget and what you're just talking about, 48 million plus, but these guys are doing an awful lot of work, and Janice Sahola Sitaway, I guess she's been the backbone of that whole organization, and it'd be nice to recognize her.
Thank you. BAA meetings, I was unable to attend. They met Saturday when we had our goal-setting meeting, and they met earlier tonight as well. So I have nothing. So at this point, we'll move forward. Next item on the agenda is 17A, executive session, contract negotiations, tax stabilization vitus. I will entertain a motion to go on executive session with the town council, the town manager.
The economic development director, the finance director, and the company representatives.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Ms. George, seconded by Ms. Gambitista. Discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. Oh, excuse me, wait a minute, hang on.
In our, in our agenda, it's kind of, it just said vitus. What is that? I think there should have been a little more definition or a little more clarity as it, is that the total company, or is that something else? I'm just looking at, maybe a little more clarity. Yes, we're going to executive session, but sometimes a little more information might be helpful.
Do we normally have, like, other things we've gone to executive session for, other tax stabilization agreements? Do we have anything more than just a?
This is what we've put on all of them for going into executive session regarding. So normally you put in what, there's three things that you can go to executive session for, contract negotiations, personnel matters, and-
Purchase, or sale.
Purchase and sale, yeah. So you'd normally identify the, what category it is, contract negotiations, you would indicate what it is, what contract are you negotiating, tax stabilization agreement, and then with whom, vitus. So that's the same thing that we've done with, like, regenerating and any of the other ones that we did. So it's the same information, and I use the same format.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I will ask for a vote again. All who's in favor to go on executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We're going to executive session, and it's currently 18:00 PM.